Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Could I ask our two Ward One candidates to come up to the stage, please? Again, good evening, everyone. My name is Susan Hardy. I serve as both a South Euclid Councilwoman and as the South Euclid Lynn Hurst PTA Council President. Since as far back as 1958, the South Euclid PTA and the League of Women Voters have worked together to provide nonpartisan voter information to our communities. The mission of the PTA is to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children. One important way we live out this mission is by becoming informed voters and electing leaders who will help create a safe, supportive, and caring community for our children. I want to wish all of our candidates in both forums the very best this evening. As someone who has stood in your place during forums in the past, I know how challenging and nerve-wracking it can be to put your thoughts and your words into words before your neighbors. I admire your courage and your willingness to serve. To our audience members, thank you for being here tonight. By taking the time to listen, learn, and ask questions, you help keep democracy strong and ensure that our communities make informed choices at the ballot box. At this time, it is my pleasure to introduce Cheryl McKnight, Chairwoman of the Hillcrest Chapter of the League of Women Voters. She will introduce our moderator and explain the format for the rest of this evening.
Thank you, Susan, and welcome, everyone, out again to our candidate forum for our South Euclid Lynn Hurst District. We're glad that you took time out of your busy schedule and that you found us. Yes, I am Cheryl McKnight. I am Chair of our Hillcrest Chapter, League of Women Voters. I want to let you know what is in store for us tonight at each forum. And as far as the purpose, the purpose is to hear from our candidates. It is to give the opportunity of the citizens of our community the opportunity to pose questions. We will have questions that are prepared by the League of Women Voters, and then we will hear from our audience. You will have an opportunity to fill out your questions on an index card that a student, thank you, students for volunteering, will hand to you, and they'll get them back to us where we will vet those questions, looking at them for duplicates. Right now, I want to bring up our moderator. Our moderator is a lone-standing, very dedicated and experienced moderator, Lee Tucker.
Thanks, Cheryl. As Cheryl stated, my name is Lee Tucker, on the chair for the Cleveland Chapter of the League of Women Voters. Tonight, we're going to host two candidate forums. One is stated as the County Council for South Euclid, Ward One, and then the second forum that we're going to have is going to be for the South Euclid Lynn Hurst School Board members. Each, just to go over a couple of housekeeping items, each candidate will be given two minutes for an opening statement, two minutes for a closing statement, and two minutes to answer the questions. We're going to just go in alphabetical order since there's only two candidates. So Ms. Elston will start with her opening statement, and then followed by Mr. Meadows, and then the closing statement, it will be Mr. Meadows, followed by Ms. Elston, and then we're just going to rotate the, hm? I'm sorry, Mark McMillan, McMill, McMillian, McMillian. Thank you, sorry. Thanks for the correction. Please turn off your cell phones. We're going to strictly enforce the time limit. The timekeepers are out front right here. They will give you a warning when you have one minute left, and then 30 seconds left, and then stop. So again, each question will be two minutes. As Cheryl noted, the questions will be given to the card question screeners through the, and then they'll be presented to me. So we're going to go ahead and get started, and so we'll start with Ms. Elston to give her opening statement.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Can you all hear me okay? All right. I want to thank the PTA and the League of Women Voters for putting together today's forum and for getting us together, and so you guys can have an opportunity to hear from all the candidates that will be on the ballot this November. For those of you who do not know me, my name is Chanel Elston. I have had the honor of serving as one of your council members-at-large since 2020. In my role over the last almost six years, I have chaired the Finance Committee, chaired the Safety Committee, and then assisted on various other committees such as Legislation and Zoning and Planning. Beyond my work on council, I also am the Vice President of the Northeast Ohio City Council Association, which is a regional organization that works to, where local leaders get to collaborate and kind of bring best practices back to their communities. I also professionally work at the VA. I've been there for 18 years. I am a social worker over the Transitional Housing Program, which provides residential housing, short-term, for veterans throughout eight counties. I am a proud resident of South Euclid, although I've only lived here for 11 years. I've really been very intentional in making sure during that time I have worked hard to accomplish a lot to serve my community. I am running now for Ward One because I really want to take all of my experience and focus that energy on the area where I live, which is Ward One. My commitment is very simple. I listen, I lead with integrity, and I want to ensure that every resident feels their voice is heard and that they are valued. I thank you all for your time, and I look forward to this evening's discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark McMillian, your opening statement?
Good evening. I'm so happy to be here with you. This is a very significant time for me. I've been selected to be the Ward One Councilperson for the rest of Ruth Gray's time, which expires in December. Council chose me the day after my interview with them. I was surprised to be in this position. I've worked for elected officials down through the years. I've had various business and public service and private service experience. In fact, I own the daycare center here in South Euclid. It's still going, even though I'm not married anymore and we don't have it. It's still doing quite well. So I'm interested in serving and hearing from you and seeing what I can do to make our city even better as we move along. One of the things that my mother used to say when I was a little boy, she would say, "Good, better, best, never let it rest till your good is better and your better best." That's what I'm seeking to do with you. I need your help, and I'll help you. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and get started with the question-and-answer sessions. And while the candidates are, after the candidates have responded, please refrain from showing signs of support or disappointment with the answers. That way, we can keep the forum moving. So the first question, I'll start again with Ms. Elston. What would be your plans as a South Euclid Councilperson for the development of green space?
So I have, we kind of have been working on some things as a council currently. We do a lot of things with One South Euclid and trying to utilize areas that are underdeveloped. I think that I would just kind of continue along those lines. Working with One South Euclid, the Recreation Committee, although I don't serve on the Recreation Committee anymore, I have in the past. And so I don't have any specific plans, anything different that the city is already doing, but I would support any of the things that we are kind of already have in the works. There's nothing specific that I can think of in mind, though.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McMillian, would you like me to repeat the question?
Please.
What would be your plans as a South Euclid Councilperson for the development of green space?
My plan for the development of this initiative is like the development of all the initiatives that I may have experience or voice in activating. I really want to hear from the residents in our community. This short run for office has been a time of many important thoughts that were shared with me about how things are going and how things should be going. And I really want to be that person who communicates these things with not just the ward members, but with the city that we are, we're members of. The good thing about it is I've been here for 35 years. I raised my children here, and we've had good experiences. But those experiences have come often from strangers, from my neighbors who I didn't know so well. And you'd be surprised to hear what folks think about some of the issues that we're confronted with. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. I know I didn't give specific directions about how these things happen because things happen as they occur. Oh, you can't hear me? Things tend to happen as they occur, and you don't know what the idea or the success might be until you actually hear from people, the persons who are affected by these decisions. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Mr. McMillan first. What are the two most important challenges facing South Euclid, and how do you propose to address and solve the problems?
What an excellent question. What an excellent question. One of the big problems that we have in our community, and we're not alone, is finances. And the fact that taxes are going up and incomes are going down, and the perspective of the community on the leaders and the decisions that we make, it is important to take into consideration the persons who are affected by those decisions. So that's the first thing, is economics. And we're not the only one. Things are changing rapidly because of the change in the federal government, because of changes that are happening in the state government. And the only protection we seem to have now is here in the city. That's number one. The second thing that bothers me the most is having voice of the citizens who are affected by these kinds of things. That's what I seek to do. So when I've been knocking on doors and talking to people, asking for their signatures, and then just telling them I decided to run because I was asked to run, folks share with me all sorts of concerns that they have about matters. Some of them I was familiar with, many of them I was not familiar with. And I asked them, "What would you have me to do? How can I help?" And they were clear and open in sharing their ideas and thoughts. That's what I bring to the table. It is voice, and it is the voice of our neighbors, our friends, and even our families, because it matters. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Ms. Elston?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Sure. What are the two most important challenges facing South Euclid, and how do you propose to address them?
I think one of the things right now is finances, but it's more the economy. And I think the cost of everything is continuing to rise. And so as city officials, our job is to ensure that our residents are able to maintain the best quality of life, given the fact that costs are continuing to rise, but your income may not necessarily be matching that. So I think one of the things that we have done, and I have really tried to be instrumental in, is, and this is more of my social worker hat that I work under, is ensuring that the residents in the city knows what resources are available. So you have One South Euclid that provides a lot of resources to our seniors, but we also have the Community Partnership on Aging that provides resources. For those that are not senior, we have resources, we have food banks, we have clothing drives. And so just making sure that the city residents and those that call here home are aware of all of the different resources and opportunities that are available to kind of help them cut costs where they can. The second thing, probably, I would say is safety. Not that I don't feel like South Euclid is a safe community. We are, crime happens everywhere. It doesn't matter where you live, things are going to happen. And so I think being very intentional and making sure that we are transparent when things are happening, but we're also trying to be as proactive as possible. A good example is, for those of you who don't know, there was a situation at Bexley Bash. And so shortly after that, we had to prepare really quickly for Rock the Block, and I think the administration did a great job kind of coming up with a plan to be able to ensure that we could still have an event and it could be successful, but we could make sure that those that wanted to attend were safe and felt secure. So those are probably the top two things I would think of right now.
Thank you. Over the last 20 years, there has been a significant increase in property rentals versus homeownership in South Euclid. What is your proposal to combat this trend to help ensure South Euclid is not a city full of rental properties? I'll start with you, Ms. Elston.
So prior to Councilwoman Gray's departure, council had started a conversation probably about a year ago on creating a committee that was made up of council members, but also community members, to basically combat and help those that were, had been long-term residents in South Euclid but were renters become homeowners. And so that is an initiative that I have kind of, we worked alongside Councilwoman Gray, but continuing to get that off the ground. And in addition to the community event that I do through Juneteenth, some of the funds from the vendors last year are going to be earmarked for helping someone who is a long-term renter in South Euclid cut some of the costs to be able to purchase a home. So I think supporting our renters, because just because you're a renter doesn't mean you're not invested in your community. You might not just be in a position where you can afford to be able to purchase a home. Trying to invest in those residents that live here if they are interested in becoming homeowners, and just trying to keep our housing stock affordable, what people can actually afford to become homeowners here.
Thank you. Mr. McMillian, would you like me to replace the question?
Repeat it, please.
Over the last 20 years, there has been a significant increase in property rentals versus homeownership in South Euclid. What is your proposal to combat this trend to help ensure South Euclid is not a city full of rental properties?
There are so many issues that increase the cost of living in our community. And some of the decisions that are being made are being made by elected officials in our community. Here's the issue that I want you to know about. Our property tax needs reduction. It's going up significantly in the past seven to eight years. There are property taxes for schools, 70%. For the county, 20%, but only 7% for city government. There are issues associated with supportive neighborhoods. One thing that makes housing so comfortable and desirable is to live in a community that is supportive of you and your family. And so that's something that I think we need to concentrate on and to work on. Some of the decisions that come about, I think, can sometimes be quite painful. Recently, we were talking about raising costs for grass that had overgrown in the community. And in this particular segment, there was no discussion about checking with the family to make sure everyone was all right, and seeing why the grass was so high. I think this is important. We live next to neighbors, and we're someone's neighbor. And if we don't care about how folks are living, then that says something terrible about our position in leadership. That's something that I'm interested in. I'm interested in ensuring that there is voice in the community, and that voice is heard.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Mr. McMillian again. Am I pronouncing your name incorrectly?
You sound like you're saying it right, McMillian.
It's McMillian, and it's Dr. McMillian. I have a PhD in Leadership and Change.
Well, we're going to correct the record, Dr. McMillian. Thank you for that. The next question is, what infrastructure projects do you believe to be the most important for South Euclid?
Oh. As I told you, we've lived here for 35 years. I'm in the second house that my family has had. And one of the things that has been such a beautiful part of this experience is keeping our neighborhood clean. And that's something I do when I don't have anything else to do. So it doesn't so much matter how expensive the houses are or what have you. What matters is how we keep them looking good and how we treat one another. That's the first thing. I know it's not directly associated with your question, but listen. I know she's going to cut me off in a minute. How we deal with our neighborhood youth, because that's the future of our community. How we engage one another in the things that come up as issues before us, and our safety issues, assuring that we're kept safe, not just our family, but our neighbors as well. So there are so many important things that we should be working on as leaders in our community. And the best way to move forward is to listen to the people who are affected by the decisions that we make.
Thank you. Ms. Elston, would you like me to repeat the question?
Please.
What infrastructure projects do you believe to be most important for South Euclid?
I think because we're a community that doesn't have a rec center, it's really important that our parks are kind of kept up to date. And so right now, I'm thinking of Bexley Park. And so we are in the process of approving some funds to be able to repair the slide. That's probably the biggest thing, because I know that summertime, even though it is gone now, will be back quickly. And we don't really have a lot of amenities, and so making sure that the kids have somewhere to go and enjoy, and it's safe, that's probably the biggest one right now I can think of.
Thank you. And that's the end of the free questions, and then now we'll get to the audience questions. Speaking of parks, I'll start with Ms. Elston. Quarry Park, do you support this park? The Toddler Playground has had a broken gate for two years, and there have been, I guess, parks that have closed. It's only open between 9:00 to 3:00, Monday through Friday, and it's unsupervised, and it's not open on the weekends, and free would be good. What is your thoughts on that? Do you want me to repeat the question?
Quarry Park? Okay. Okay. You're saying, do I support it?
It's, do you support this park, the park itself? And then the question was, because there's a Toddler Park that hasn't had a broken gate for two years, and then, like, it's not open all the time, so like, how do you support that park? And what continued investments do you want to provide to the park?
Yeah. I mean, I will say that I was at Quarry probably a couple of weeks ago, and the ninja, American Ninja Warrior, I can't think what the thing is. There was a gate that was broken on it, and we just weren't aware of it. And so I took a screenshot, and I sent it to the service director, and the next morning it was fixed. A lot of times, we, the service department, may not necessarily know when something is damaged. In the event that you have made the service department aware, and you feel like you haven't got a response, even though I am at-large and I'm not directly a particular person's ward council, I always tell people they can always reach out to me. You can send me an email, you can give me a call, and I'll just typically ask you to send a picture, and I can send it to our service department. I haven't been made aware of that. We, I can speak on, probably on behalf of all of council, we support our parks. And we are very intentional in making sure that we have money set to the side to try to keep them updated. If you come across something that is damaged in one of the parks, if you take a picture or you give us a call, we will make sure that our service department is very responsive, and they will come out and repair it. In terms of the splash park closing, that's not something that I have been made aware of as a council member.
Thank you. Dr. McMillian, I'm going, do you need me to repeat the question?
Please. Yes, ma'am.
So Quarry Park, and it was specifically for the splash park, do you support the park? Because the question, part of the question states that the Toddler Playground has had a broken gate for two years, and that the splash park is only open from 9:00 to 3:00, Monday through Friday, and it's unsupervised, and it's not open on the weekends, and of course, the splash park being free is the best. But how would you support it as a councilperson? How would you continue to support it or and to make it better?
I believe we have the funding to make a difference in this particular issue. It is one of the things that makes our community so much more valuable. There are decisions being made about very expensive housing, not far from where I live. In fact, in my backyard. And the cost of these things are astronomical compared to the people who live next to me and across the street and what have you. If we're able to do that kind of thing, we ought to be able to take care of the park. Right? We ought to be able to make differences in our community that affects the persons who need it the most. We have young people, and it is their way of spending time, and it is, and it's good for them. So it's something that I have a commitment for, particularly young people and particularly old people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question is talking about a park, is the dog park. In 2023, the South Euclid Dog Park, which is in Ward One, was renovated. At that time, city administrators, and the first person will be Dr. McMillian answering this question. At that time, city administrators decided to remove the doggy waste bag dispenser, citing their reasoning as people should know to bring their own bags, and patrons were not respecting the inventory and taking entire rolls. Do you agree with the city administrators? If so, why? And if not, what will you do to ensure the people's voices are heard? Do you need me to repeat?
Yes, please. Thank you.
So in 2023, the doggy park in Ward, which is in Ward One, was renovated. At the time, a decision was made to remove the doggy waste dispenser. And the rationale for removing it that was given to the public was, people should know to bring their own bags, and the patrons were not respecting the inventory and taking entire rolls. Do you agree with city administrators? If so, why? And if not, what will you do to ensure the people's voices are heard?
No, I don't agree with city administrators. I, and it's not that I disagree with them wholeheartedly. I think that there are more than one way, one ways to solve these issues. And I really want things to be as comfortable as possible for our neighbors. If you're walking your dog and you pick up the waste, it's good to have a place to drop that waste. And I think it's something that we can do. I think it's completely tolerable, and that it can, and we can make it happen.
Thank you. Ms. Elston?
I don't agree with making the decision without involving the community. We have a Recreation Committee, and so I think that might have been a good opportunity to have some type of community forum where you can get some input, and the city could explain on their end what is happening, and then maybe the residents could kind of work with the city to come up with a way to get around removing it completely, but still being able to ensure that when someone comes, they have a bag available to be able to utilize. So I think it would have been an opportunity to probably collaborate with the residents.
Thank you. The next one, we're moving on to safety. We're starting with Ms. Elston. Safety and economic issues don't stop at municipal borders. What municipalities border Ward One, and what will you do to connect with those municipal leaders?
Well, Cleveland Heights is around us, Richmond Heights is around us, Lynn Hurst is around us, obviously. I, in my role as the Vice President of NOKA, I kind of already collaborate with all of those entities. So any council, village, or township within Northeast Ohio, we already collaborate, and we work together. And so I have always been very intentional in relationship-building. I feel like whatever happens in, even though Cleveland may seem far away from South Euclid, a lot of things that happen in Cleveland will impact South Euclid. So I, we have conversations kind of on a regional level about things.
Thank you. Dr. McMillian?
Well, you know, I just started. But I've, like I said, I've lived in this community for such a very long time. And I really do think that if we're going to be successful, it is because we embrace the issues and concerns of the neighborhood communities that we're attached to. So I agree, the things that are happening in Cleveland affect us, as well as Richmond Heights. The things that are happening in Cleveland affect us as well as Richmond Heights. And, and Cleveland Heights, we can, and Euclid. If it, if it's happening in our area, it's probably happening somewhere else. And it's, it's not a problem to, uh, use decisions that are being made in communities that are, are near us. Because what we're interested in doing as leaders in our community is to help those neighbors that depend on us and the decisions that we make. So that's what I'm saying. We don't have to say, I live in South Euclid, so I only make decisions according to my area. No, we, we can make decisions that fit this, this area in general. And I think it's good for, for us and it's good for our neighbors and it makes a difference.
Thank you. Still, on safety, what are your thoughts on the National Guard being deployed in South Euclid? And how will you respond if they do get deployed to South Euclid? And the question goes to Dr. McMillian first?
Well, it depends on why they're, they are ordered to come here. Um, there are some things that are going on in our country these days that are heartbreaking. And, and, and to be honest with you, I don't think that we have issues in, in South Euclid that would require that kind of, uh, control. I think we, we're fortunate to live in a, in a very nice area. And my interest, if elected, is to continue to do some of the things that we've done historically, traditionally and today, to move along and to protect one another from issues that, that are harmful. I don't think that there's anything wrong with that. I think that looking out for your neighbors is important and it is necessary. So that's my answer. Yeah.
Thank you. Ms. Elston?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Sure. What are your thoughts on the National Guard being deployed in South Euclid? And if they did get deployed, how would you respond?
So to my knowledge, the governor stated that he wouldn't use the National Guard in Ohio. But I guess in the event that that did occur, that's where the relationships kind of come into play with your state senators and your state representatives to do the best that you can to kind of control and take, and not lose home rule. Um, so I would, I would do whatever it is that I am asked to do in order to be able to ensure that we are safe as a city. Um, but I am hopeful that the governor is going to stick to what his word was, which is not utilize the National Guard in Ohio.
Thank you. Next question is a scenario. I'll start with Ms. Elston and if you need me to repeat it, I'll repeat it. A resident contacts you and reports that a city employee was verbally abusive to them. The resident is angry and wants you to fire the employee. How do you approach the conversation with the resident? And that's part one. And part two, after the conversation, what are your next steps?
So how do I approach with the resident and what are my next steps?
Yes.
Uh, okay. So I'm gonna listen to the resident and allow them the opportunity to, to voice the situation and express how they feel. Apologize for the situation that they encountered. And typically when a resident reaches out to me, unless I have all of the facts at that moment, I'm going to ask for some time to go back and kind of do some research and digging. In this situation, that's probably what I'm gonna do. Um, go back and have a, I don't have the authority as council to fire anyone. So I would go back, have a conversation. Um, nine times out of ten, it's going to be with the director of whatever department that employee works in and probably including the mayor and maybe the law director, depending on how verbally abusive, kind of what the situation was. Um, and then the outcome of that situation would be probably me going back and explaining that I had this conversation and what the next steps would be, which typically would not come from me anyway because I am council and I don't have the authority to hire and fire government, I mean, city employees. But just making sure that I am very transparent and communicate with them. Um, ensure that they understand that I am apologetic and empathetic of the situation that they incurred and hoping to help them feel as if they had some type of resolve. Typically, people just want to feel as if they are heard. Um, even if the outcome that I can provide is not necessarily what it is that they want, they just want to feel like they're heard. So that is something that I try to provide.
Thank you. Dr. McMillian, would you like me to repeat the question?
Sure. Thank you.
A resident contacts you and reports that a city employee was verbally abusive to them. The resident is angry and wants you to fire the, the employee. How do you approach the conversation with the resident? Part A and then part B, after the conversation, what are your next steps?
Well, I, I tell the resident that I'm really heartbroken to hear that news. And I'd ask, have you talked to their supervisor? Have you had any communication with the leadership of that particular organization? Do you need their number and the person's name? Can I help you in any way to move forward? And, and I'd do whatever I could to facilitate them making the connection with the person who oversees that conduct or that kind, kind of behavior. Uh, sometimes, sometimes when you talk to people about problems and, and ask them to participate in, in helping to solve them, sometimes people will say things like, well, I only wanted someone to know because I was very hurt about this experience. Now, I'm using this as an example from when I was over customer satisfaction for Calhoka County. I was promoted, thank you. I was promoted and I worked under Mr. Dennehan, who's passed away now. And it was a new position. And the success of that position came from open communication. And not just sharing, but careful listening to concerns and, and problems. And we're able to deal with many things back then. And I think it hasn't gone away. I know it's been some years. My hair was black back then. But it's, it still works. And, and I think it's important that we help them to engage in, in problem solving.
Thank you. Next question, I'll start with Dr. McMillian again. The question is, how will you help to ensure that newer families, and especially minority families, who may not have had long histories of political engagement are heard? And what engagements, what engagement ideas do you have?
One of the best things we can do is to talk with people. And you don't have to have an, an agenda per se. I'm on the board of PACA, that's Parks, Parkside Ammonizelia Community Association. I just got reelected to that position. I've been on there for a few years now. And one of the things that we've done actively in our community is to listen to the persons who have concerns about things that are happening. There is nothing wrong with it. And it is something that is missing in public service, I think, today. It's kind of going down. But when you listen to persons who, and the, and the circumstances or situations that they're confronted with, oftentimes you can give advice or direction to them. And it's, it's warmly appreciated. And it's something that all of us can do. So it's something I, I really, uh, think is important. And I think it is a commitment that we ought to have.
Thank you. Ms. Elston, do you need me to read the question again? How will you help to ensure that newer families, and especially minority families, who may not have had long histories of political engagement are heard? And what are your engagement ideas that you have?
So I, a lot of the residents that I was speaking to when I was walking and just in my interactions, that's not just when I was seeking signatures for Ward, but when I was at large, a lot of the residents were saying that they didn't feel like they were really aware of the things that were going on in the city. Even though we put out, you know, a quarterly magazine, you know, we're on social media, some residents just don't really know what's happening. And so one of the things that I think may be a good idea to bring back is, and this was more, I think, post-COVID, this is when kind of it slowed down, was, is ward meetings. And not necessarily having them at the same place every quarter, but kind of rotating them around the ward. I think it would give an opportunity for people to come out, to learn about what's happening. You could invite the police chief, the fire chief, the service department. Um, I think bringing those back more regularly is a good idea. But I also think it's important to not just educate necessarily the families. And when, when you say families, I'm thinking adults. I think youth is important also. Um, and so I have been very intentional for the last four years in coming to brush during Senior Captain Gounday and registering the vote, the seniors to vote. Not just registering them, but like having really good conversations about why is it important to vote? How can you be an informed and educated voter? And I think, because I am a advocate, avid believer that the youth are gonna kind of fix, might be, it may be, I'm trying to think of what the word is. Maybe silly of me to think this, but I think that the youth are gonna fix all the problems. And so I feel like in order for that to happen, they have to be educated on why it is important to vote. Um, not just when it is every four years when the president's on the ballot, but in all of your local elections, all the way up. And so I think it's important for us to focus on the family, but not just in a sense of the adults, also focusing on the youth.
Thank you. Start with Ms. Elston, the next question. City council is the finance watchdog. What experience do you have in holding departments accountable?
Well, I'm the finance chair now. And so we, I meet regularly with our finance director before our council meetings every month to kind of go over what her report's gonna be, take a look at things, kind of look at how are we doing? Um, is there anything that we see on the forefront that's coming? There's been a lot of changes on the state level. And so how do we make sure that we're prepared if we lose funding in a certain area? Um, in my professional role as a social worker, I am over a program. So I manage all of the grants. It's about $3 million worth of grants that provide services to veterans that are homeless. It provides transitional housing for them. So I oversee that. Um, so I have experience on the city level, but I also have it kind of with the federal government in my role at the VA.
Thank you. Dr. McMillian? City council is the finance watchdog. What experience do you have in holding departments accountable?
Well, I have worked for county government. And I had responsibility for financial issues back then. That's been some years ago. I, I shared with you that I was the over customer satisfaction for the agency. It was my fourth promotion, I mean, my second promotion. My first, I was over foster parent training. Then I got promoted to be, um, under Mr. Dennehan for customer satisfaction. Then I became the regional training director. That was my third promotion. And then my fourth promotion was I was administrator of training and staff development. All of those have financial issues. And, um, in the training and staff development, I, I represented Calhoka County to the state of Ohio in the Ohio Child Welfare Training Program. And that is something that we dealt with regularly. Uh, so it is, I've had that experience in a public situation. And I also owned a business here. It was at a, a church on Green Road. Uh, that's where we started. It was a daycare business. We rented one room and then we filled that up just by the words of the parents. And, and then we got the, got the second room. Then we got the third room. And then we opened up our, our center, uh, down, down the street. When, when that ended, we had 66 children and 10 staff. So I've been dealing with economic issues pretty much all my life. It's not new. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question is, it's kind of like a two-parter, but it's the same topic. Green space. Why don't we hire a working arborist? And the city could allocate more money for city tree care and watering new trees. Any thoughts about what we can do better as far as the trees are concerned? And we'll start with Dr. McMillian.
You said trees?
Yes. And hiring a working arborist.
I really don't know. I'm so sorry. Uh, I, I, I think it's an important issue. I don't know if we would necessarily have to hire someone because we can partner with organizations that are skilled in, in that, that area. So I, I think, um, before we go out and say, we're gonna hire somebody to deal with these kinds of issues, I think we ought to do an examination of what's available for us as in our community. That's one of the things that is not unique to us. It is, uh, we live in Calhoka County. Uh, we're not the only ones who, who have this concern. So that's what I'd be interested in, is first seeing what others are doing to deal with, with this particular issue. And seeing if we can do, do something similar in, in our, our community. It doesn't cost us anything, perhaps.
Thank you. Ms. Elston, you want me to repeat the question? Green space. Why don't we hire a working arborist? The second part of the question states that the city could allocate more money for city tree care and watering new trees. Any thoughts about what we can do better?
I think there are so many things that as a city you focus on. And I think we try to be as intentional as possible to focus on every single thing, but there may be some things that we're overlooking. So I think that is a great opportunity, if that is something that a resident feels that they want us to focus on, to bring it to our attention. Between the Tree Commission and the Rec Committee, I feel like anything that you feel like we're not focusing on, it's a good opportunity for, to bring it to our attention so we can put it on our plate. It doesn't necessarily mean we may, we may have the funds this year to hire an arborist. It doesn't mean that we're against it either. Sometimes I think we're just focusing on certain things and we may not think about other things that are particularly a passion for someone who is very much into nature. That's not something that, I have three little shrubs in my front yard. I'm not really a nature person, but it doesn't mean that I wouldn't support us doing more as a city. It's just something that I think now that it's brought to our attention, we could possibly focus on.
Thank you. We touched slightly on this earlier about recreation, the city of South Euclid not really having a rec center. What would, and I'm starting with Ms. Elston. How, how are we gonna address the recreation for kids? I guess what can we do to help the children with recreational type activities?
Yeah, it's a challenge because when we lost the MYCOM funds, that was kind of helping to supplement the fact that we don't have a rec center. We're, we're landlocked as a community, so we can't just find land to build a rec center. And even if we did have the land, a rec center is very expensive to, to keep up. And so I know last year I'd reached out to the city of Cleveland Heights to see if there was an opportunity to maybe allow our residents to use their rec center, you know, for a minimal cost. That didn't necessarily go anywhere. Um, right now, I know I'm being intentional kind of in another role. We have an organization that recently started up in Lynn Hurst and they are interested in providing some kind of after-school activities out of the South Euclid Lynn Hurst Library. And so that's something that I'm trying to explore. Also trying to see, there is another city, it's either Maple or Garfield, that has a partnership with the Boys and Girls Club, where they don't necessarily have a standalone building like that's on Broadway, but they kind of come into the school districts and provide some services. And so trying to utilize other organizations in place of having a rec center building is what I think we're gonna have to continue to intentionally seek out.
Thank you. Dr. McMillian?
I think it's important that we consider the youth in our community. One of the things that I've, I have a habit of doing is going to the library. And I've noticed that after school, the libraries are packed with young people. And they're running around and doing all kinds of things. Uh, it's, it would be marvelous if we had something for them to do. Um, and it's, and it is necessary for us as we're building our community. The things that we're doing today have impact on our future. So that's something that I'm interested in. And it's something that I see happening in other communities, particularly, particularly on the west side of Cleveland. There is a tension given to young people and, and the times that they have when they're not in school. And all I'm saying is, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We can borrow from what others are doing and we can do it systematically. We can do it according to the funds that we have. And we can do it as a way to engage voters to increase the funding for those kinds of issues that are important to our community and to our neighborhoods. That's something- That's something that I value, is something that makes a difference. And so that's what I'm interested in, in this particular position. I'm very much interested in this.
Thank you. Down to two more questions. What is your position, and I'll start with Dr. McMillan, McMillian. What is your position on making the end of Parkside an entrance to the Metro Parks?
That's where I live. I'm not interested in that. My neighbors aren't interested in it. We own a little piece of land there, and this conversation's been going on for a long time. And it's ironic that we just talked about this, maybe about a week ago. So I represent the people who live in that particular community, and they're not interested in that kind of access, at least not right now. Not right now. And so that's where we stand. I don't say things that are different from other people.
Thank you. Ms. Elston?
Can you repeat the question one more time?
What is your position on making the end of Parkside an entrance to the Metro Park?
I mean, we talked a lot about green space, but I am not, that's not where I live. So I definitely think that that would be a conversation that should be had with the actual residents that live there, to get their input, see how they feel, maybe weigh some pros and cons. But I am for whatever is going to be for the betterment of our community in addition to the residents. I don't want to make their lives more difficult. But sometimes we have to make decisions where someone may not necessarily be happy, but it may have a good outcome on the end. So I would definitely think it would be a conversation that would be had. I don't think that the administration's to make the decision without the residents.
Thank you. Final question, we'll start with Ms. Elston. What is your stance on the upcoming school levy? Are you a supporter or not?
I'm a supporter. I support the schools. I support it financially for the levy. I'm also have, I'm willing to support, you know, in terms of signing a letter, any type of advertisement. So I'm a supporter of the schools.
Thank you. Dr. McMillian?
I support it as well. I'm concerned, though, about the cost and the implications it has for the residents of our community. So I just, I'm just interested in costs that meets both needs. The need to educate our children to the best of our abilities, and the need to be able to afford it as residents of this community. It's important. It's important for our history. If we are to advance, it happens with our young people. It's what they learn. Now, I'll tell you this, this is the final question, right? I was a little boy that was called retarded when I was small, and my mother, a black woman, said, "There's nothing wrong with my son." And she took me out of that school, and she kept me at home for a year. Now they call it homeschooling. And she taught me many things as we sat at the kitchen table. She said, "Good, better, best, never let it rest till your good is better in your better best." I says, "Yes, ma'am." And then she moved us to another city, and we're the second black family on that street. And she advocated for me. And I went from being a struggling student to one of the top students in the third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, all the way through. And when I went to college, it was on an educational and athletic scholarship. I graduated from Central State University with my bachelor's degree. Later, I went to Cleveland State, and I got my first master's degree in education, adult learning and development. I made straight A's. Then I got my second master's degree in public administration from Cleveland State. Then I went to Harvard University on a scholarship, the Kennedy School of Education. I gotta stop.
Thank you. Now, we're gonna do our closing statements, and Dr. McMillian, we'll start with you. You have two minutes for your closing statement.
Me?
Yes.
Oh, marvelous. Okay. My interest is to hopefully continue building and supporting community-wide events that are purposely designed to educate and engage youth and families, and with learning, and with learning with initiatives that have similar commitments, like those Councilwoman Ruth used to talk about. Our commitment, yours and mine, will help eliminate poor self-esteem, violence in our community, and academic failures for children. I really believe parents can help children cope with anxiety, and some of the absolute best examples are quietly here in South Euclid. This is therefore a plan for success that is open to suggestions and your help moving forward. I have one minute. My approach, and my approach and my way is to honor my mother and all the parents that have used their voice and helped us to get to the point, this point in our personal journeys. Remembering these special people of our lineage, learning about their lives, and seeking to understand the context in which they lived their lives gives us a perspective on the work of our own life journey. I cannot say enough about my own mother's courage, wise and indomitable spirit. She was quite a special lady. Indeed, she would, however, want me to talk about myself on an occasion like this. Bam. I'm done.
Thank you. Ms. Elston?
Serving South Euclid since 2020 has been one of the greatest honors of my life. I've learned that progress comes from collaboration, accountability, and always keeping residents first. As your Ward One Councilperson, I will bring proven experience, regional leadership, and a deep commitment to fairness and transparency. I will continue to ensure fiscal responsibility and invest in our youth, our seniors, and our schools. I'm not asking for your vote, I'm asking for your partnership. Together, we can continue moving Ward One forward as a thriving community our families deserve. I thank you for your time this evening, and please consider voting for Chanel Elston for Ward One. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's give them a round of applause. Okay, next up, we'll have a slight break in case you need to take a bio break, but next up will be our school board candidates, and thank you, Ms. Elston, and thank you, Dr. McMillian, for your time.
At this time, I'm pleased to once again introduce Cheryl McKnight, Chairwoman for the Hillcrest Chapter of the League of Women Voters. She will introduce our moderator and explain the format for the remainder of this evening's forum. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. All right. So again, welcome. Welcome to this portion of SEL School Board Candidates Forum. The purpose of this forum is to present an opportunity for our community to be heard, to hear from our candidates regarding issues that are on your hearts and mind, and to see where their stand, where their stance is with certain topics. The forum is being streamed live, and it will be made available as well for later viewing on the League of Women Voters' website. At this time, I would like to ask every city official, judge, to just stand and show your presence and wave ward leaders and all, even if, and those that are running, the candidates not contested. Okay? I just wanted to say thank you for coming out and supporting this forum and continuing to be involved in our sitting. The overview is, we will have a question-and-answer period. The League have prepared questions that will be posed to the forum. Then you will have a one-minute time to answer and respond to those questions. We have a timer sitting up front. They will raise, when you begin to speak, they will raise a card that has one minute. When 30 seconds come, they will raise the 30 second. When it's time to stop, they will raise to stop. We ask that you please stop. We also want to let you know that you'll have a two-minute opening and a two-minute closing. And again, thank you for coming out, and I want to now, at this time, bring our experienced and gracious moderator, Lee Tucker, from League of Women Voter.
Okay. Thank you, guys, for your patience, and we're gonna get through this. So the first, we're just gonna go in alphabetical order. So the person that will go first with their opening statement is Ms. Richardson, and then we'll go alphabetically, and then the closing statement will be reverse order, so it'll be Ms. Trippi going first, and then coming back this way. We're gonna rotate through the questions. Again, these questions are only, your answers are only one minute, just because of the number of candidates plus the volume of questions. So we will begin with the opening statement by Ms. Richardson.
Thank you, Lee. Thank you, everyone, for coming this evening. I am Becky Richardson. I have been a proud Lynnhurst resident for over 16 years. I have a son who is a freshman at Brush and a daughter who is in sixth grade at Greenview. I've been involved in PTA since the time my son was in kindergarten. It was important for me to build relationships within the school district. I had heard, when my son was a baby, "Oh, Sunview's great, but you need to leave before Greenview, or you need to leave before Brush." And I wanted to really understand what's really going on in the schools. And it was important to me to build relationships with people that were at every other school in the district and understand what was happening and what was going on. I quickly fell in love with PTA and took on leadership positions. I have been president of multiple PTAs in our group for over the last nine years. And over that time in my presidency, as with PTA, I have worked to advocate for our students, advocate for our families, our teachers. I've really worked to build relationships with everyone. I am running for school board because it is, it's important for me to help build thriving schools, to help really increase the strength in our communities. As school board member, I will continue to take my advocacy work to the next level, to continue to collaborate with our teachers and our families, make sure all voices are heard, work with my fellow school board members to ensure our district's policies and procedures are in line with what's actually happening in our district. I am very much looking forward to the opportunity to share my experiences with you this evening and answer all of your questions. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you. Mr. Sanders?
Hello, I'm Christian Sanders. I am a two-year South Euclid community member, but have lived and worked in adjacent spaces to this community for quite some time. If you attended or listened to our school board meeting of August, you would have heard me say, "I served ice cream at Dairy King as my first job," and have been invested in this community since. In regards to education, which is why we're here, I believe in students and putting students first. I believe in equitable opportunities for all students. That's been very evident, as that has been my life's work, starting in the collegiate sector, advocating for multicultural students at the University of Mount Union, educating and bringing in students into the Baldwin Wallace University, then moving to private education, but nonetheless creating access and outreach programming for educational opportunities for disadvantaged youth at St. Ignatius High School. I then moved professionally to working in a space to open the doors into the corporate sector and manufacturing sector. And so in my day-to-day work, I work in helping young people find opportunities through their education and continued education efforts to build a career. I take great pride and pleasure in the work that I do. I look forward to continuing to serve young people, creating opportunities for access, for opportunity, and ensuring that everybody can move to where they want to go through the bounds of education. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Shirley Smith. My name is Shirley Smith. My name is Shirley Smith. And once again, good afternoon, or good evening. I am a former state representative. I am a former state senator. I spent nearly 20 years in the Ohio Legislature. I was appointed to the Ohio Parole Board by the governor. I now have my own small business, and I am currently working in the district as a substitute teacher. And the reason I am running is because I care. I care about our children. I care about their future. I care about us collectively. And the reason I say that is because the kids that attend, or the students that attend our schools, will soon make decisions about our future and what that future looks like. I want to play a role in that design of what our tomorrow will look like. And don't get me wrong, I don't think that caring is enough. Caring is just the beginning. I do feel that we have to work hard, because when you have over 3,000 students in this district, all different personalities, all different attitudes, coming from all types of social and economic situations and conditions, all that means is that we have to work hard at what we're gonna do, and that work starts on the school board. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Trippi?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. First of all, I would like to thank the League of Women Voters and our SEL PTA for hosting this candidate forum here tonight. My name is Melissa Trippi, Missy to a lot of you, and I am a longtime resident of South Euclid Lynnhurst. There is an insurmountable amount of value and pride that I know comes with being a part of this community, and having that connection to our community correlates directly with the value and pride of a strong public school system. Not only are my husband Phil and myself graduates of Brush, but so are our parents, grandparents, siblings, aunts, uncles, and now our children. Our roots here run deep. My vision for our school system is one that is paramount, making sure that our students are provided the highest quality education in order to write their own success stories, and that their success will foster community-wide pride and support. I plan to be a voice for our students, staff, families, and neighbors, listening, engaging, and acting with the mindset that a strong school and strong communities are dependent on one another. There is a balance between finances and educational needs that needs to be tended to with a diligent level of focus and clarity that I can provide in order to make sure our district's system of checks and balances is abided by, affording each family the exceptional educational experience they deserve, while also being sensitive to our taxpayers' hard-earned money. I want an opportunity to give back to our community and help to ensure that our school system is doing all that it can to make sure our students, families, educators, administrators, and community members are proud to be ARCs.
Thank you. We will start with the questions from the audience. Again, the questions are one minute each, and so we're gonna begin with Ms. Richardson. The first question is, what do you bring to the school board by way of creating true inclusion for students, parents, teachers, and residents?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Sure. What do you bring to the school board by way of creating true inclusion for students, parents, teachers, and residents?
Thank you very much for the question. One of the things that I think I bring to the table as far as inclusion is being able to listen to all voices and ensure all voices are heard. One of the things that I'm really proud of, and part of my PTA experience, is I had the opportunity to lead the elementary PTA playground replacement project several years ago. During that time, we worked with a fellow, with a group of PTA people to help bring the playgrounds. Their playgrounds have been very old, and we worked with district administrators, we worked with other students to get their insight to what they wanted. The thing that was best about that project was not the new playgrounds we got, but it was the relationships that were built between the three elementary schools. And that, those relationships are very much still And that those relationships are very much still in force today, being able to help bring, be inclusive of all of the students in our community.
Thank you. Mr. Sanders, would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
What do you bring to the school board by way of creating true inclusion for students, parents, teachers, and residents?
I bring six years of experience working as a diversity and inclusion manager at the school level. That's hearing voices of all communities, hearing those perspectives, collaborating across different functions, right? So if we're noticing we're having an issue particularly with our students, which this is a hypothetical, like at our parks, right? That's not, it's not, it hasn't been our students with some of the issues that we've had, but how do we work collaboratively between the schools and parks and recreation so we can ensure that we can identify our students in a time of crisis or not, right? So what can we do to communicate outward, communicate upward, hear people, but then as we come together as a board, represent those, but those different mindsets? As we come together, but then also ensure that we're making swift and informed decisions on where we might need to change policies and hold our constituents accountable?
Thank you. Ms. Smith, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I think I remember the question. What I bring is the connection I have with the teachers, the students, and the staff in the schools. That experience is invaluable, because it's a daily experience that I gain. I get to touch, I get to feel, I get to talk to. So that, that experience is something that you have to be in schools to say what's gonna be inclusive and what's not gonna be inclusive, because if you're not there, you don't know. The other part of that is what I desire is to bring or restore the confidence to our schools from the community. If, and you most, most of you know that, our schools, our schools are fifty percent, well, our schools are predominantly black schools, but our cities, both cities, Lynn Hurst and South Euclid, are predominantly non-black. So what that tells me is we don't have confidence in our schools. So we have to bridge that gap and bring people back into our schools so we'll have a more healthier environment within our community.
Thank you. Ms. Trippi, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
I plan on being a link between the community and the school and helping to make sure that the lines of communication are open and clear. I also hope to facilitate dialogue between educators and administrators to make sure that everyone's needs are met by acting with equity in mind and making sure that if a student's needs are not being met, that there is a conversation started to address that matter and best discuss what needs to happen to make sure that that student and all students are set up for success.
Thank you. Next question, sorry, next question, I'll start with Mr. Sanders. What do you think are the top three issues in our district?
I would say the top three issues would be funding. Funding is always of an issue. Funding is sometimes a gateway to opportunity. I would then say our ability to embrace and really embrace the district. And I say that when we look at initiatives like Kindland, those are things that is being embraced by the district as a whole, and that's something that can help push the district forward to where we're all walking with a common language and common ground, and I think that's imperative in any district. And then outside of facilities and those types of initiatives, I would say definitely that confidence in the school district as well. Not that I'm one to tell people where they should have, where they should send their kids to school, but nonetheless, if we have a large constituency of our district leaving our district for education, those are funds that are leaving the district, which creates further issues. And so I would say that confidence, facilities, and then those strategic initiatives to build community.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Could you repeat the question for me, please?
Sure. What do you think are the top three issues in our district?
I think the top three issues in our district, as I said before, is confidence, respect, and safety. I think we need to develop a plan for active shooters, drills that we perform as we do fire drills, also lockdown drills. As I said, we need to build the confidence between the community and the schools and to make sure that people are safe. And I know you said three, but there is such thing as normalizing bad behavior. I work in the schools, so I know behavior is at the top of the list, and I think that there should be, well, we should revisit that issue and put that on top. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Trippi?
In my opinion, the most challenging thing facing our board right now is funding and how to appropriately allocate what funding we do have and how to be transparent with why certain dollars were spent where and the decision that is behind that, and how spending decisions are made in order to have the most favorable outcome for both our students and our community, because they need to work side by side to be strong. Kind of going along with that would be teacher retention, hiring and keeping the great teachers that we do have here, and it kind of goes along with the adequate funding, making sure that our educators have what they need in order to feel appreciated and empowered to deliver the best teaching experience. Finally, probably just the chronic absenteeism that I, as a parent, am notified of on a regular basis to make sure that our students are here and learning every day.
Thank you. Ms. Richardson?
I agree. I think state funding is definitely a significant issue that we face, or funding in general. I also think communication is an opportunity. Communication has certainly improved over the last year or so that we've had our new communications director, Ms. Cash, in place, but I always think that there's certainly room for improvement. I also think retention is something that we need to be concerned about as well. I think it's important that we focus on our elementary families and our elementary students and make sure that they are very, very excited about coming to Brush and graduating from Brush. So implementing things like maybe having the marching band come and play at recess or having the graduating seniors come in with their caps and gowns to elementary schools and having those kids get excited about graduating, wanting to graduate from Brush and wanting to do the things the big kids are doing. They will go home and then share that excitement with their parents, who are the ones that are making the decisions about the future of their children's education.
Thank you. Next set of questions, we will start with Ms. Smith. The question is, "A system of public schools is mandated by our Ohio Constitution. Given the alternatives such as charter schools, religious schools, and homeschooling, why is our public school system important?"
Well, first of all, I think it's important because it's free, and if we take the monies from the public school systems, that means our school, our schools or our students won't get the education that they deserve. So public, the public schools are very important, because that gives everybody, everybody, a chance to learn, the opportunity to learn.
Thank you. Ms. Trippi?
Could you repeat that, please?
Sure thing. "A system of public schools is mandated by our Ohio Constitution. Given the alternatives such as charter schools, religious schools, and homeschooling, why is our public school system important?"
That is a complex topic, a matter that is ultimately in the hands of state legislators, and state legislators create and fund voucher programs, and it's at their discretion and how to implement them. It's the school board's responsibility to make sure that our public schools are providing a high-quality education, serving every student in the district. Ultimately, not something that we have jurisdiction over, but our focus is to make sure that we have strong, well-funded public schools to best serve the needs of our students and community.
Thank you. Ms. Richardson?
Our public schools are mandated by the state to ensure that we are providing education, quality education for all students. Of course, families have the right to choose where they choose to send their children, but the public schools offer such a sense of diversity and inclusion, and it's important to, for us to send, have the opportunity to have our children in a place where they will learn to interact with all kinds of different people from all kinds of different walks of life, and as they continue to grow and develop and graduate from high school and enter the workforce, they will be working with people from all different walks of life throughout the entirety of their lives. And it's important, as a public school, that we set our children up for success in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Sanders?
Could you repeat the question for me, please?
"A system of public schools is mandated by our Ohio Constitution. Given the alternatives such as charter schools, religious schools, and homeschooling, why is our public school system important?"
Public school system is important, because I believe of those other options, this is the only one that pushes to build community in a vast. I've gone to religious school. I've experienced charter school as well as homeschool. None of them pushes for an opportunity for community-based learning. And when I say community-based learning, you're learning with your neighbors, which means you're building compassion outside of the classroom, and that spirals into how your community, your community experience boils out, and that's not always provided through those other education opportunities. And so when you think about that, along with the facts that you pay taxes to live in this community, you want to get to know your neighbors and build a sense of community, which I think that is Lynn Hurst's community motto, a community of neighbors. That's why public schools are important.
Thank you. Next question, we will start with Ms. Trippi. What policies will you support or oppose to protect students from bullying?
From bullying?
Mm-hmm.
One thing to protect our students from bullying would be to ensure that our educators have the proper training and development so that they can effectively teach and support students from all backgrounds. Specifically, providing targeted support programs is to ensure that all students can thrive.
Thank you. Ms. Richardson?
Can you repeat the question?
Mm-hmm. "What policies will you support or oppose to protect students from bullying?"
I think it's important to support any kind of mental health policies and initiatives. We have a curriculum in our schools now called Start With Hello to really focus on kindness and reaching out to other people. I do think it's also important to share resources that we have. So if you or your student finds yourself in a bullying situation, we have a bullying reporting form that anyone has access to. They're able to print it off, and they're able to turn that into the building, which will then prompt an investigation. I think it's important that we share that information with our families so they know what resources are there, so we can, when that happens, we are then able to get in front of it quickly and investigate thoroughly and provide the proper resolution to that.
Thank you. Mr. Sanders?
When it comes to bullying, I would personally like to see us to continue to invest in our Kindland Initiative. I think the opportunity to start with kindness allows for an opportunity for us to break down walls. I'm a big fan of human interaction theory. As I get to know you and interact with you, I will also break down my bias of you. That's where I'm also, I've been a fan of restorative justice education, and particularly in certain, in matters of conflict, sitting students down and having those restorative circles. A lot of times, there's misunderstandings that leads to this bullying or suspected bullying. And if you can make an opportunity for people to collaborate, you can make an opportunity for them to build a relationship. Not saying they need to be friends, but to have a respectful relationship is always the goal. But then in instances of continued bullying, ensuring that we have policies for that student to be reprimanded properly, but also to be educated. I think a lot of times, we want to see students be put out of the education system, whether it's a suspension or removal from class. That only furthers the issue, because typically, those students who are exhibiting that behavior are struggling within their academic journey, and as opposed to removing them, we want to keep, to include them in their academic experience.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
I will, excuse me, I will support policies that teach our children the differences between each other, the conditions that we all live in, the environments that we all live in, so that they can recognize that we are all one human being, or we're all human beings. So I think educating our students is more important than anything. Right now, in schools, they are teaching that curriculum about bullying, and it has gone over very well with the students. They're very responsive. So I think the best thing we can do is educate, educate, educate.
Thank you. Ms. Richardson, we'll start with you next for the next question. What are three things you have done in the last four years to support children in our school district?
So three things the last four years to support children?
Mm-hmm.
So through my work in PTA, I've focused on understanding what is happening in all of the schools by working with the other, the other PTA units. I've worked to facilitate conversations with the elementary schools, with all of the other administrators in the district to talk about what is happening at the other schools and provide the opportunity for parents to connect with other, other parents and other, other leaders in the district. I've also worked to help, I've also worked to provide opportunities for students to come to other buildings. I've worked to plan the trunk-or-treat events that PTA holds annually. And though it's something fun and cute and exciting, it's opportunities for people to come together and connect with each other, to gain familiarity with other buildings. It's one of the most important things that I focused on.
Thank you. Mr. Sanders?
Three things to support children in our district, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. First and foremost, I was appointed and accepted the interim board member position, right? So to be able to look over the budget, newer to the role, but nonetheless, that's huge to children in our district. And being a voting member on that, on this school board has been an absolute privilege. I've walked children to school and from school as I'm transporting my own. You notice those ones who are out there on their own, and although it's not an active participation, and to say like, "I'm following this kid. I'm keeping an eye because I care." And just as of yesterday, broke up a fight of some children on my street. Not sure that all of them belong to the district, but nonetheless, let's talk about it. Why are we doing this? And those are some things that help children, because these are children, they're gonna make mistakes. They should be guided as opposed to punished when mistakes are made. But at the same opportunity, what are things that we can do so that we don't get in these, in these circumstances moving forward?
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
I, I had to laugh to myself when she asked that question, because one of the first things I did to help the students in this district is I left retirement, so I thought that was a big, huge thing. But other than that, I go in every morning to school and I teach. I go in every morning and I, in some instances, reprimand. I go in every morning and I have conversation with those that aren't doing very well, mentally as well as physically. So I am in the schools every day, and I do what I can to support our students, and I give them the institutional knowledge that I have gained over so many years. So that's what I do for our district.
Thank you. Ms. Trippi?
Three things that I have done over the last several years. First thing that comes to mind is just volunteering. I've assisted where my children have been involved and have become actively involved and invested in what they've been doing and learning from that and learning their friends and families through that activity as well. I've been a community advocate, asking questions and communicating with the current board to discuss what has been going on just in the neighborhood and what's, things maybe need a little bit more attention. And finally, and probably the most prominent, is my involvement in the Brush PTA. I've been the third VP for, I think, going on eight years this year, spearheading and actively engaging in things like concessions and after-prom, after-prom specifically to ensure a fun and safe activity for our seniors. So those are some things I've done.
Thank you. Mr. Sanders, I will start with you next. What do you see are the diverse needs of our students and how will you ensure that the school system meets those needs? Want me to repeat?
Yes, please, sorry.
What do you see as diverse needs of our students and how will you ensure that our school system meets those needs, those diverse needs of the students?
So I think intellectual diversity will always stand out when you think about the diverse needs of the students. We're gonna have students who have different capacities. That's gonna happen in every school. Our extraordinary scholars, you know, ensuring that they, they have the proper resources. And so if your student's on, on a particular learning plan, are we meeting the needs of, of that student in each plan? And that's something that comes down, not only to funding, but that also comes down to the care. And I think as we're selecting our teachers, we're doing so with care, to ensure that, you know, they're, not, not to push someone to go the extra mile, but just to make sure that you're walking and approaching each student as an individual with care for that person and their, and their academic needs. It's not always gonna be able to be the most accessible, but at the same point, it's the most effective. And, and in regards to how do we continue to push that? We get to know our students. We make sure we properly evaluate our students. And then we push for full classroom inclusion. Um, we get to know our students, we make sure we properly evaluate our students, um, and then we push for full classroom inclusion um, with those extra resources as, as permissible.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, do you need me to repeat?
Yeah, would you please?
What do you see are the diverse needs of our students? And how will you ensure that our school system meets the, uh, diverse needs of the students?
Well, with me being in the schools on a daily basis, I have to say, I think our schools are do- doing a magnificent job in meeting those diverse needs. I would say they need more resources to cover those needs. But, um, if I said anything less, it would not be the truth because our teachers and our staffs in these schools are doing a wonderful job. And, and, and they should be, uh, at least, uh, acknowledged for doing what they're doing. Now, i- in terms of what they need, um, I, I think what we need is more parental engagement. Now that would meet the diverse needs, to have more parental engagement because I think that's where we fall short in the education of our, our children.
Thank you. Ms. Trippi?
Kind of, kind of go back to something I touched on earlier, which is just the proper funding to make sure that everyone is provided with the right tools to be able to adequately reach all of our students in all capacities.
Thank you. Ms. Richardson?
I think it's important to ensure that our teachers and anyone else working in the schools with our students understand our students' individuals, what they, who they are as a person. Um, and, um, we want to seek out additional grants and resources to be able to provide the additional supports. Funding is a significant issue, but there's, we have all kinds of community partners that we work with um, to help provide additional supports to those families that may need it. Um, so being very attentive to our children, to be able to put them in, in contact with some of the resources that we have available. And I do also agree with Ms. Smith that, um, more parental engagement is key so we can know the families as well as we know the students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, we start with Ms. Smith. Do you support the upcoming levy?
I do. I do. Thank you, Ms. Trippi.
Yes, I absolutely support the upcoming levy.
Ms. Richardson?
Absolutely. Um, the funds that we are receiving with this levy are going to go primarily to maintaining our district operating expenses. So we think about keeping class sizes as a reasonable, uh, at a reasonable size. We think about, um, busing, um, a little bit of that money. So one mil of the money of, of the, the district funds is going to go to, uh, permanent improvement in the buildings. So if I can direct everyone's attention to that hole in the ceiling right there. Um, so we will be using that money to help renovate Brush. Um, and then we will also be, uh, working to have a dedicated preschool building, um, at our Southland building that's currently, uh, houses some administrative offices, but isn't really otherwise being used. So I absolutely support the levy.
Thank you. The next question will be, where do we? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms., I do that every time, no matter what. Mr. Sanders? Next question, uh, the same question. Do you want me to repeat it?
No.
Do you support the levy? Okay, gotcha.
Appreciate everybody advocating for my voice here. Uh, but I absolutely support the levy. Um, I think it's very important for us to, can you, to continue to invest not only in the facilities, um, but also in our operating expenses to give our students the best experience that they can have. Obviously, we don't want to continue to see holes in the ceiling. Also understand there's some HVAC concerns. I know over that, at, at Roland, there was also the change of, I believe, a staff lounge into another kindergarten room, right? Um, so we want to see what we can do to continue to drive down the costs, move that pre-care out, I mean, not cost, drive, um, down our, our, our student-to-teacher ratio, um, our classroom sizes, keep them small. And I know particularly when we're looking at the, the lower schools, opening that pre-K building would be, you know, a huge relief on other schools to open up additional spaces, um, for us to, to, to continue to grow our district as well. I think it's awesome.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Ms. Trippi. The question is kind of long, so if anyone needs me to repeat it, I will definitely repeat it. This is a policy question. Many state-level policies such as attendance incentive requirements can unintentionally harm minority students and families who may face systemic barriers. How would you advocate at the local and state level to ensure these policies are adjusted so they support, not punish, students? And that's Ms. Trippi.
That question is an excellent example of the complexity in this area and it highlights my overall objective, generating community support of our school system and why that is so important. And that is a great question and I want to make sure I give you the most accurate information on that. And some of these topics require more in-depth discussion, which is why I plan to have an open and honest dialogue in our community and get feedback to be able to, you know, bring that back to our board and make sure that we have the appropriate solutions to apply the appropriate policy.
Thank you. Ms. Richardson, you need me to repeat?
Yes, please.
Many state-level policies such as attendance incentive requirements can unintentionally harm minority students and families who may face systemic barriers. How would you advocate at the local and state level to ensure these policies are adjusted so they support, not punish, students?
I think it's important to understand a lot of the policies that we have in place in our district are coming from the state, sometimes even the federal level. Um, I think it's important to understand what the policy in itself says and how it's implemented in our district. And then when a policy needs to change, uh, or people desire a policy to change, be any kind of policy, but understanding who our state representatives are, who our legislators are, legislate, legislators are, um, and being able to reach out to them, um, to advocate for the needs of our family. Um, I think one of the opportunities as a district we have, I mentioned earlier with communication, but it's getting out issues that are facing a, a broad population. School funding is one of the most recent ones. But I think we as a district can send out emails in our newsletter even that say, hey, here's the issues, here's how your voice can be heard, here's you, who you can contact at the local level and at the state level. And, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sanders? Sure. Many state-level policies such as attendance incentive requirements can unintentionally harm minority students and families who may face systemic barriers. How would you advocate at the local and state level to ensure these policies are adjusted so they support and not punish the students?
Right, I, I would love to have the policy, our current policy in front of me, um, to be fully educated on where we stand. Um, but from, from my experiences, right, where you're seeing that truancy, um, what can we do to get in touch with the family first? Um, and if, if, if there's anything that we could do to help mitigate the situation as this is about students getting to school, um, that's one thing. Um, but when we're looking at the policy overall, right, what, what are we seeking to, to gain, right? And, and, and through the policy, are we seeking to help the student, um, through our particular stance on the policy? Um, and then from there, right, what can we do to then put pressure on our other, uh, representatives to make changes to those policies if it's not something that we can change in-house?
Thank you. Ms. Smith? Would you like me to repeat?
Uh, yeah, if you would.
Okay. Many state-level policies such as attendance incentive requirements can unintentionally harm minority students and families who may face systemic barriers. How would you advocate at the local and state level to ensure these policies are adjusted so they support, not punish, students?
Well, see, that question is quite difficult for me to answer because I work in a, uh, minority school. All minor, not all, well, it is a majority, minority school. And I don't see how the policies are negatively impacting the students. I, in, 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 in my perspective, I think they should be a little bit more stringent. I mean, when you have as many, as many children coming to school late as much as they do and, and, and not attending school, uh, not often as they should, I don't know if that policy is affecting them unless it, it affects the pocketbook. So when you talk about old policies at the state level, I think we need to strengthen them, uh, in the schools a- at home and not the schools. It's not, it's not the state policies at this point, from what I see. It's, 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 it's raining in the, the kids to get there on time and, and coming to school. So I don't quite un- understand that question.
Thank you. Next question, I'll start with Ms. Richardson. Do your children currently attend public school? If not, why do you want to be a board member if you don't trust the ability of the district to educate your own children?
Yes. Both of my children attend public schools. I think that this is the best choice for my family as individuals. My children have learned many, many skills, uh, for, both from an academic perspective and from a social, emotional perspective. Um, they both have fantastic, uh, abilities to interact with their peers, which I think is extremely important. Both of them are involved in the arts. Um, both of my children are in bands, they're both in athletics. Um, and the development that they are getting here, I think, is second to none. And that's why I choose to keep my children in this school district.
Thank you. Mr. Sanders?
Can you repeat the question for me?
Sure. Do your children currently attend public school? If not, why do you want to be a board member if you don't trust the ability of the district to educate your child?
Great question. All right. Um, I have five children, um, of which one of my sons attends South Yucca Public Schools. Three of my daughters were in, um, Cleveland Public Schools. As of last year, they're currently being homeschooled. The reason that they are not in the district is not due to my lack of trust in the district. I am not the parent who's responsible for being able to make their educational choices. Um, it's something that I'm fighting for my rights as a father. Um, I would fully support them being in the district and it's something that I'm currently advocating for. Um, as for my other son, he is having an amazing experience starting off kindergarten. And then for my fifth child, he goes to Kiddico because he's not quite old enough for public schools. Um, and my interest sits with the district is to ensure that all of my children have this as an education option. Um, they have a quality education and one that I think gives them a community-based education so they can get to know their neighborhood, their community, and be proud of where they grew up.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Well, I don't have children, so they don't go to, to, to the district schools.
Thank you. Ms. Trippi?
Yes. Uh, all four of my children attended South Yewlandhurst Schools. Um, one is currently a junior here and he's doing amazing. Two of my children, my daughter graduated last year, but, and my son this year now are part of the Excel Tech Community, a program that is wonderful for them to have access to. Uh, and my older two graduated, one in, uh, twenty-one and one in twenty-three. And my three oldest are now part of state school and they're at, uh, Kent State University. So, um, I have a hundred percent faith and trust in our system and educating our children and I wouldn't have it any other way.
Thank you. Next question, we're going to start with Mr. Sanders. What are your thoughts on book bans?
My thoughts on book bans? Um, I think every education, but, excuse me, information is more accessible now than it ever has been. And I think when we look at book bans, we look at limiting, um, opportunities for information based upon an agenda. Um, I personally don't believe in filtering out information that is appropriate. So when we think about books and what it takes for someone to not only write, but to publish, um, and then have a book accessible to people, um, it's typically quality information unless it is for the form of entertainment. Um, so nonfiction is out there. Um, but i- in regards to book bans, I think things can certainly be appropriate for certain age audiences and inappropriate for certain age audiences. Um, but I'm, I'm not one to say, you know, I want to see them ban, what is, what's the book? Uh, the hair book, um, by the local gentleman from Akron, right? I don't want to see that be banned. I want to see people be able to celebrate themselves and whatever it takes for you to see yourself through educational material, I hope it's accessible to you.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
I don't believe in banning books. Uh, I don't think that it's, um, I don't even think that it's appropriate because what you're doing is taking away people's history and, um, given, not giving people the opportunity to learn about different places, different environments, different people. I think that we should remain open about whomever we are, whoever they are, whoever's across the country, across the land, whoever they are, if they want to be read about or we want to read about them, I'm sorry. I think that people should be given that opportunity. I do not believe in book bans.
Thank you. Ms. Trippi?
I do not believe that books should be banned. Um, I think that they have their right place at the right level. Um, they all, books at every level have something to teach and something that people can take away from them. And when applied at the correct cognitive level and understanding, I think that is appropriate.
Thank you. And Ms. Richardson?
I also do not believe in banning books. I believe books are an important resource that should be accessible to everyone. Um, I think it's important that students have access to read about people and stories and characters that they can relate to, that are written by people that they can relate to. I think that certainly not every individual family is going to be okay with every book and I respect that. But I do think that that is an individual choice with each individual family. Uh, but I believe that all of the books should be available to all students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Ms. Smith. How much money will the levy cost the average residence or household? And how much mon, how will the money be spent? How the levy dollars be spent?
Well, I can't, I can't tell you how much it will cost, uh, each household, but according to the information I have, uh, it's going to be, uh, spent on aging buildings. Uh, students need for safe, warm and dry learning spaces and new construction and to, uh, maintain existing schools. Um, and I think it will last six years since, it, six years since the last levy. It has been six years since the last levy.
Thank you. Ms. Trippi?
I think it's something like twenty-three dollars per a hundred thousand dollar home, uh, per month that it'll cost taxpayers. Um, it's important though, it is going to our infrastructure of our building and making sure, these are old buildings that we're dealing with and things need to be repaired. We need to make sure that our students and our faculty and everybody involved is in a safe environment so that appropriate learning can take place.
Thank you. Ms. Richardson?
So this levy is a seven-point-nine mil levy. Um, I believe the figure that Ms. Trippi gave is, is correct, um, if, if I recall properly. Um, but those funds, like I mentioned, six-point-nine of those, um, mils are going to general operating expenses. One mil will be going to the permanent improvement to help restore our buildings. Uh, one thing I would like to note about the levies is I was just reading our district financial audit last night and, uh, it gave levy data back to nineteen-seventy-eight. And during that time, we have passed every single levy every three to four years with the exception of a, a couple of years ago, uh, where we were able to go eight years between a levy.
Thank you. Mr. Sanders? Uh-huh. How much money will the levy cost average residents or households and how will the money be spent?
Awesome. Based upon rough estimates, um, if you're looking at a South Yucat home, you're between two-fifty, three-hundred thousand on average, I would argue. Um, so that's roughly seventy, what, four dollars a month potentially? Um, if we're looking at Lynn Hurst, home values are a little bit higher. Um, you could see that up into, you know, the, the very low one-hundred dollars of a month, um, which I, I think it's a small cost to ensure that communities, your community is being educated properly. Facilities are growing, which over time will increase your home value. Um, and, um, I would argue that if we have been continuously passing levies, we've been doing what we can to ensure that we are growing in our community and growing our educational opportunities. And I don't think today is the time for us to stop that.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Ms. Trippi. It's, the question says, "Education has become the target for hot topic issues. What skills do you have for constructive responses to controversy?"
Hot topic issues often provide conflict and conflict is inevitable. But my educational background in human resources, specifically management and labor relations, has afforded me the ability to understand a need for a consistent flow of communication to be happening across all levels in order to maintain transparency and operate with the least amount of conflict. You know, we need someone who can act with open communication, emotional regulation and a commitment to collaborative problem-solving, which allows for moving past reactionary behaviors and finding mutually beneficial solutions, uh, all while preserving relationships.
Thank you. Ms. Richardson?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Sure. Education has become the target of hot topic issues. What skills do you have for constructive responses to controversy?
First of all, I think it's important to remember- First of all, I think it's important to remember that our children are not political, and we have to keep politics out of education. I think a lot of my conflict management skills comes from my day job as a claims leader at Progressive Insurance, where I consistently have to have difficult conversations. I think it's important in any difficult and uncomfortable conversation to have a respectful sit-down conversation with that person or group of people that you're in a conflict with, and work to understand what is their perspective? And where are they coming from, and what are their thoughts on the issue? And then I can explain where my thoughts are, and we can have an open dialogue. And I might not change someone's mind, and a lot of times I probably won't. But what I do want to walk away from that conversation with is respect for every single party there. And the door to continued open communication. That conflict and these hot topic issues are not just a one-and-done thing, these are going to be an ongoing conversation.
Thank you. Mr. Sanders?
Can you repeat the question for me, please?
Mm-hmm. Education has become the target of, for hot topic issues. What skills do you have for constructive responses to controversy?
I think a lot of times the opportunity to pause. A lot of times we want to give a response in a forum today, right? You, you've got a response on everything, but sometimes you need to just pause and give yourself the, the space to be able to respond appropriately. If not given that space, hear people out. And, and, and I think we have to get back to the opportunity to have civil discourse and respectfully disagree with one another, but make a decision on how we're going to move forward. And that's going to look different in different spaces and in different conversations, and depending on the temperament of those two in conflict. But that's something that I do very well, well regularly. By the nature of my, my current role, I lead an ERG. I have controversial conversations quite often, and I'm asked to moderate a lot of these different events across my multinational manufacturing company that I work for. And so having conversations that touch on the bounds of race, sex, gender, ethnicity, and doing so knowing you're in different geographic places is something that is personally my expertise.
Thank you. And Ms. Smith?
I think you have to be very skilled at breathing deep, listening, count to 10, and think before you speak.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Ms. Richardson. Give us an example of your greatest work in the district that has a positive impact on students and staff. Have you served on other boards?
So, can you repeat the question? I want to make sure I get all parts.
Give us an example of your greatest work in the district that has had a positive impact on students and staff, and the second part is have you served on other boards?
I'll answer the second part first. So I have served on a board of an employee resource group, Christian mentioned ERGs, in my job at Progressive. So focused on the needs of making, of, of working families and making Progressive the best place parents can work. The greatest positive impact that I feel that I've had on the district is the building relationships to impact change. I mentioned my work on the playground replacement project, I think that was probably the biggest one. Our playgrounds have been falling apart for years. And having the opportunity to come together with the other, with the elementary schools in our district, our school leaders, our city leaders, and all of us across the board working together for one common goal to figure out how can we come together, what can we do to brainstorm alternatives and alternate funding? And what can we do to all come together and have these play spaces, not just for our elementary kids, but also for the youngest kids of our community? And the playgrounds are what attracts kids and families to schools, and being able to get those families into our buildings.
Thank you. Mr. Sanders, you need me to repeat?
I think I've got this one.
Okay.
I think accepting the appointment to be the interim board member is the, the greatest thing that I've done thus far for students within this particular district. But to the second part of the question, I have served on multitudes of boards in different capacities. I currently serve on the Diversity Council for the corporation that I work for. I have been a part of Marriott College's Alumni Association Board. I have sat on the Implementation Board team for the Welsh Academy at St. Ignatius High School. There's certain aspects of the board that I served on as a student there for the general governing body. I have been in student body councils, ETC, as well as the Near West Theater's Young Professionals Board.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, you need me to repeat the question?
Yeah, would you please? Thank you.
Give us an example of your greatest work in the district that has had a positive impact on students and staff, and have you served on other boards?
Well, I have served on other board, the biggest board that I've served on, and believe it or not, is the Ohio Parole Board. How does that correlate with what I'm doing now? I have been in every prison in this state at least twice. And I've talked to some very interesting people who have taught me about conditions, environment, how to learn, why they didn't learn. And so those experiences, I have the opportunity to share with children that are in school that may be unruly, that don't want to listen, that don't understand. And I know it's a hard pill for some of you to swallow to try to correlate that with students in school, but I tell you, it really counts. My perspective is quite different from everybody else on the panel because my lived experiences are different. I, I come from a background where I had the opportunity to sit on the parole board. And I tell you, that experience really matters to, for what I'm doing today. So has it been impactful? Yes, it has. And I don't regret it, and it has helped me so much with the children that I am dealing with today.
Thank you. Ms. Trippi? Would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
Give an example of your greatest work in the district that has had a positive impact on students and staff, and have you served on other boards?
Sounds pretty personal for me. Something that I think that has had the most impact and reward for the system is my children. I've watched them learn and grow in my hometown, in my school system. And now they're young adults in our community, and they're thriving, and I couldn't be more proud of them. And taking their achievements and bringing them back here and showing our staff and our administration and our educators, you guys did this, you have led them here. So that is, to answer that part of the question. And boards that I've served on, I mentioned earlier, PTA has been a huge part of my life. And I have been part of the concessions committee for quite a long time, and they are paramount in earning funds that are provided by PTA for scholarships and beyond. And I am so proud to have been a part of that throughout these years.
Thank you. Next question, I'll start with Mr. Sanders. What would you do if you disagreed with something the superintendent or other school board members were pressing you to support, whether it be a change in a board policy or spending money in a manner that you considered wasteful?
In the event that, you know, I came into disagreement with my fellow board members and/or superintendent, I would like to speak accurately to what my concern is, voice my opinion. But I'm also not one who is, is, is too bullheaded enough to not know that if this is the direction that we're moving in, I'm going to then move forward and support it, especially publicly, so that we can show ourselves as unified district leadership. And say, for instance, if I was opposed to the levy. We have those conversations in our board sessions. But when I move back to the general public and for what we're looking to do for the district overall, we're supporting the levy now, because this is where we've decided as a board to move forward. And even though as an individual I might have some grievances with that, we're going to walk forward. And that is an example, so please don't quote me on that, 100% support this levy as is.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, you want me to repeat it?
Yes, would you?
What would you do if you disagreed with something the superintendent or other school board members were pressing you to support, whether it be changing a board policy or spending money in a manner that you consider wasteful?
If it's a unanimous vote, of course I, I would go along with it, and I would be a team player.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Trippi?
One more time, please?
Sure. What would you do if you disagreed with something the superintendent or other school board members were pressing you to support, whether it be a change in board policy or spending money in a manner that you considered wasteful?
Disagreement that would happen kind of needs a conversation and an open dialogue to continually happen. Needs evaluation on why and where it's happening. Research to figure out where the disconnect is coming from, and working together to see the big picture and ultimately decide on what works best for everybody.
Thank you. Ms. Richardson?
I think it's important when there is something that maybe I disagree with, it's important to remember, we're all individuals, and we all have our own thoughts and perspectives. And when there is something that comes up that maybe others are supporting, it's important to have the open dialogue and the open conversations. It's also important for each individual person to do their own research and then come together as a whole and have open dialogue to understand what everyone else's perspectives are. It's also important to come into these conversations with, maybe I'm thinking one thing, but then be open to having my mind change. And like others have said, maybe we have a difference of opinions individually, but it is important to come together as a cohesive unit and provide a united front. So even if there was something, maybe I voted no on, everyone voted yes on, of course I would move forward and support to be cohesive with the rest of the team.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Ms. Smith. Our community events such as Rock the Block are shut down due to fighting. The latest event, the fighting were not SEL students or not SEL alone. What can be done by the school board and working with the local government to ensure our community continues with events while keeping our students and community participants safe?
I think they could do what they've always done, because in the past, the Rock the Block has been successful. I think times are changing, kids are changing. I think the way we think is going to have to change to deal with the mentality of the kids that are in the community and most times coming into our community from somewhere else. So I think that we have to do what we've done all the time, but just improve those things.
Thank you. Ms. Trippi, would you like me to repeat?
No, I think I got it.
Got it.
In light of many of these events that have happened in our neighborhood where you see all the fighting and whatnot that's occurring, and it is shutting down these fun community events, and you don't want that to happen, I feel like that our board can work together with our current security and staff to work in conjunction with the city on their level to make sure that adequate security and policies are in place so that the event can move forward in a safe manner for everybody to enjoy.
Thank you. Ms. Richardson?
I think it's important to be in consistent communication with our cities, our city leaders, our law enforcement, and our own security team to be aware of the other, to be aware of the events that are occurring in our cities. And then also us, us helping promote the messaging from the cities. Lynn Hurst just had their annual Home Days event. There was a note that came out from the school district explaining the expectations and, and the rules that the city had outlined, that said, "No child can come into the park unescorted by a parent." And they had very strict security measures in place, and they made sure that they were outlined, all of them were outlined in the email communication that came from the school. And I thought that that was very important and very helpful. And the Lynn Hurst Home Days celebration was able to go on successfully, and we didn't see some, a lot of the same issues that we've seen in other events around the area.
Thank you. Mr. Sanders?
Cool. Somebody feel free to tell me if I'm wrong here, but Rock the Block was a glowing success this year. And that's, and I think that's two-part. A, as a community, I believe we are strong, and we showed up strong to our event. But then also, there was controlled access points. And I think those controlled access points allows for the enforcement of those policies of not a student moving in or a young person moving in without, without parents. That type of commitment and buy-in, not only from the neighborhood, but also of the different forces that came together for that event, made the event successful. Had we been able to do that for Bexley Bash, I don't think we see that shut down, which was, I think, the, the incident that should have been referenced in that question. And so when, when we think about that opportunity to control access points, but then also for us to build strong as a community. Sure, the event in my particular section of my neighborhood could have gone awry yesterday had not myself and other neighbors stepped out. And so I don't think that goes to a school board thing, right? I don't think that's something that, that we solve, I think it's a, a community of neighbors that solves it.
Thank you. And our last and final question, due to time, we got through most of the questions, were a couple of questions we didn't get a chance to ask. We'll start with Ms. Trippi, and then we'll go into our closing comments. How would you support the district teachers, and how can we attract qualified teachers?
It's going back to funding again on this. I would support our teachers by making sure that they have the appropriate resources to, to adequately teach our students. I'm a firm believer that when you are provided with everything that you need, you can accomplish almost anything. And I'm sorry, the second part of that question was?
And how can we attract qualified teachers?
Offering nothing but the best in their pay, their healthcare, their contracts, making sure that they are well taken care of.
Thank you. Ms. Richardson?
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. How would you support the district teachers, and how can we attract qualified teachers?
I think one of the biggest things that we can do to support our teachers is to listen to them, to have conversations with them about what their concerns are, what's going on in their classrooms. I think to attract qualified candidates to our district, it's important to showcase the amazing things that we're doing within our schools. Make sure that we're clearly outlining our benefit package and like all the other perks they have of working in our district. I think our teachers do a lot with our students every day. And as a board member, I want to continue to build relationships with them. For people that are willing, I would love to come into the classroom and spend some time with our teachers, seeing what they are dealing with on a day-to-day basis, so I can more effectively support them as a board member.
Thank you. Mr. Sanders?
Can you repeat? I just want to make sure I get it right.
Sure. How would you support the district teachers, and how can we attract qualified teachers?
Excellent. In, in my brief time, I've, I've not gotten to meet a lot of teachers, but I've had some conversations with teachers, as a lot of this happened really, really quickly in regards to the board appointment. But I think getting to sit down with teachers, see their concerns, their needs, their wants for the district. Right, you're here, we value you, so let's listen and see what adjustments we can make in regards to attracting and retaining teachers, which I think attracting is wonderful, but we need to focus on retention. So what can, we can do to push professional development, maybe growth within a role. Are you a teacher that seeks opportunity in leadership? How can we help you facilitate that, and pushing for those next steps, discussions for their careers? And I think another thing that we can do is incentivize for our students who desire to teach and desire to be educators to come back into our district. And so what are things that we can do to assist in your education? While you're pursuing the education, you need to be a qualified educator within our district. I think nobody has better experience than those who have, who have walked the halls.
Thank you. And Ms. Smith?
I think what we can do to support our district teachers is first to give them more pay, because they definitely deserve it. As I said at least three times here tonight, I am in the schools. I am in the schools every day. What our teachers need is to have protocols in place for children who are unruly. We need to have protocols in place where our kids are more disciplined. We need to have protections in place for our teachers who are doing an exceptional job. They are not paid what they deserve. The children in our school need more support, thereby giving our teachers what they deserve. A smooth day to go home to their, to their families. What we need for our teachers, to bring more teachers to this district, is not only more pay, but we need more support from parents who will discipline their children so it will make the days of our teachers go much smoother. That's what we need for our teachers.
Thank you. Thank you. And now we'll do the final closing statements. We're going to start with Ms. Trippi, and then we're going to work our way back down to Ms. Richardson. Ms. Trippi, you have two minutes.
As I mentioned earlier, my roots here run deep. My face and my family name are imprinted in the archives of team and organization photos from years gone by, plaques commemorating the reopening of Greenview, and years of volunteering I have committed to. I have immense pride in these schools, and my interests lie in making sure these schools are strong, setting up our students for success from the beginning of their educational journey, and imparting that pride into our community, drawing out support. If given an opportunity to serve our community as a school board member, I will be someone you can trust to listen, engage, and act in order to ensure all students and educators' needs are met with the utmost care and concern and needed to make sure that our district thrives. I will act as a voice for our students, families, educators, and community members with a focus on student success, community pride and support, and as a negotiator to make sure funding is provided where it is most needed in order to yield nothing but success. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Sorry about that. If you want the system to stay as it is, don't vote for me. If you think normalizing bad behavior is good for our schools, don't vote for me. If you want to build community confidence in our schools, vote for Shirley Smith. If you want the students to respect the teachers and staff, vote for Shirley Smith. If you want the system to implement new protocols, vote for Shirley Smith. If you want parents to be more engaged, vote for Shirley Smith. And if you want our teachers and our students and our staff to be safe, vote for Shirley Smith for the school board. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sanders?
I thank you all for your time today. I thank you all for the opportunity to represent South Euclid Lynn Hurst Schools. I thank the current board for the work that they've done to get us to where we are. I thank the current board for appointing me to this interim position. As someone who prides himself as an educator, someone who prides himself on working in educational programs now, I don't do the work that I do for my entire professional experience for gratitude or for the boosting of self. My primary goal in this life, I think my parents cursed me with it by name, if you're a religious person, my name is Christian Ezra. My name literally means Christ help, or to help Christ. And I don't mean to be religious, but I hold my name as a very strong compass of my character. I don't seek this position to boost self. I seek this position to boost others so they can actualize their dreams. That has been my primary goal. It is the work that I do. I seek to help other people actualize, realize their dreams. For a large portion of that, that's been through education. Now I actually have a small portion of where I get to hire people and help them see the promise of the education that they seek out. And so, you know, I don't, I don't, I can't say today that, you know, I might be the absolute strongest candidate here, but I can say without a shadow of a doubt I'm the person who cares and wants to see your students succeed, which means our community succeeds. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Richardson?
Thank you very much to the League of Women Voters and Ms. Tucker for facilitating the discussion this evening, also to SEL PTA Council for helping to coordinate this evening. Most of all, thank you to all of you for being here. It means a lot to have your support, to come out and hear, not just from me, but from all of us candidates, about why we are running for school board. As a school board member, I will continue to do my work in advocating for our students, for our families, for our teachers. I will continue to lead, and I will continue to listen to the concerns of everyone to help ensure that our policies and procedures and the day-to-day operations of our district are the best that they possibly can be. I truly believe that when we all join forces and we come together, we will achieve greatness in this district. I would encourage you to please visit my website, beckyforselschools.com, for more information, as well as to donate to my campaign. And please remember, vote for Becky on November 4th.
Thank you. That concludes our candidate forms, and I would like to thank the members of the community for coming out and your thoughtful questions. I'd like to thank the candidates for sharing their thoughts and giving us their ideas about how they can help to make the school board better and maintain a fantastic community while making the school board a great place. And I'd like to thank the Hillcrest Chapter League of Women Voters, especially Cheryl McKnight, and I'd like to thank the South Euclid Lynn Hurst PTA and Susan Hardy and the rest of her team. Thank you, everyone. And I'm sorry, I'd especially like to thank Brush High School for allowing the use of their facility. Thanks, Brush.
Want to say anything, Cheryl?
Okay, thanks.
I just neglected to say thank you to Lynn Hurst and South Euclid Democratic Clubs for co-sponsoring this event. And again, as Lee indicated, thank you all for availing yourselves in this time and the great questions. We could not get through them all. We tried our best. You all did good with the questions. And thank you, candidates, for participating. Good night.